I'd like to ask the Mayor to join me at the lectern, please, for a presentation for Juneteenth, 2019.
Yay!
This evening, we have a joint council-mayor resolution, and Council President Cruz will do the honor.
Yes, again, we're a few days late on actually presenting this formally. We did want to make sure that the citizens of Southfield recognize Juneteenth this year, as we should. The resolution reads as this: "Whereas Juneteenth is a holiday marking the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas this year marks the fifteenth annual State of Michigan Juneteenth Freedom Day recognition. And whereas, when the Union Army General Gordon Granger landed at Texas Port City of Galveston in 1865, as the Civil War drew to a close, one of his first actions was to read to General Order Number Three, which stated that all slaves are free, and that former masters and slaves have absolute equality of personal and property rights. And whereas, following his statement, June nineteenth, or what we call now Juneteenth, became the emancipation date of those long-suffering for freedom. And whereas, since then, as the oldest-known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in America, this tradition of celebration has remained strong well into the 21st century to recognize the triumph of the human spirit over the cruelty of slavery, and to honor the strength, endurance, and faith of African-American ancestors. And whereas, in June 2005, Michigan Governor Jennifer M. Granholm signed legislation officially designating the third Saturday of June as Juneteenth National Freedom Day in Michigan, and Senator Martha Scott sponsored the Senate Bill 384 to recognize Juneteenth as the official state holiday. And whereas, it is imperative that citizens across the state join together to acknowledge a time of our history that carried on the nation's ideas of equality, democracy, and celebrate the joys of liberty and justice for every American citizen. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Mayor of the City of Southfield, as well as the city council, do hereby declare Juneteenth 2019 in the City of Southfield, Michigan, and encourage all citizens to participate in Juneteenth Freedom Festival and celebrate African-American history and culture while continuing to promote diversity, equality, and a strong sense of community in our city." And so, with that being said, again, we just wanted to make sure that our city was vocal as it relates to the importance of Juneteenth here today, and we thank you for that.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the joint resolution for the Juneteenth celebration.
Support.
So, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve this resolution for the Juneteenth celebration. All those in favor?
Aye!
Are there any opposed? Resolution is approved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also, there is a copy of that statement online on the website as well, if anybody would like to read. Next, we move to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move approval of Consent Agenda Items A through I.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve Consent Agenda Items A through I.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ficassi.
The... Are we talking about what we went through as far as the study sessions? Is this our agenda, the one that we were talking about? In other words, I'm looking for the...
C.
...PESAC properties?
Yeah, that's Item C.
I would like to have that removed from the vote. I'd like to have that, I do not want that. I will not vote for it because of that.
Okay.
In other words, I can have that removed, so I can vote no. So, it's all accepting for that item.
Would you like to amend your motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll amend my motion that we...
It would be...
Item C.
Everything except Item C.
It would be C. I'm looking at the numbers, but it's in Agenda C.
Okay. Did we get a second already?
Yeah, I did.
You did, okay. So, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum. Now, so we've amended the motion, now to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and I. Are there any questions or concerns on that, on those? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Okay. So, we'll come back to Item C now.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ficassi.
I vote against C, probably because, more than likely because, years and years and years of planning have gone into that corner piece, is one of the most prominent corners in the city, and the plan had is suggested to put their design in keeping with all the reports we have received up to date.
Okay. Any other comments on Item C?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Mandelbaum.
That being said, I'd like to move approval of Consent Agenda Item C.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, that we approve Consent Agenda Item C. Are there any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We have one no vote from Mr. Ficassi. Thank you.
Could I have, Mr. Chairman, could I have those comments I made, please, put into minutes?
Yes, you can. Absolutely. All right, next we'll move into public hearings. Our city planner, Mr. Crowe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our first public hearing is a rezoning request of decor construction on behalf of the owner, Tomorrow Star Academy Daycare, to rezone .3 acres of land from our two single-family residential to OS Office Service, property located at 19831 West Nine Mile Road, on the south side of West Nine Mile, between Maple Bridge and Evergreen. This is the site. This is a close-up of the parcel, existing conditions, future land use, and current zoning. So, it's requested to be rezoned to OS, which is currently adjacent. There is an existing daycare facility adjacent to this, and they want to expand their operations. And if the rezoning gets approved to move forward, then there's a special land use and site plan that's part and parcel to this, but we're here just to consider the rezoning at this time.
Okay.
And I don't know if the applicant is here.
The applicant is here, I see. Yep, okay, very good.
Again, we're not focusing on site plan details, but if you want to just come and explain what you're looking for.
Could you just give us your name and address, please?
Hassan Badun, Decor Construction, on behalf of Tomorrow Stars. We're trying to expand the business they have right now. We are acquiring the property, the house next door, and we're using it for more, as a daycare for markets. Any question?
If you wouldn't mind having a seat right there, we'll open the public hearing at this time. The public hearing is open. If there are any individuals here today that would like to speak to this particular issue, please come to the lectern and give your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald Pio.
Sorry.
Pamela Gerald Pio, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'm in total support of the rezoning quest for decor construction on behalf of the daycare. I think that the daycare has shown their commitment to the Southfield community by providing the service. From what we've heard in the prior hearings and people talking, it appears to be a very diverse daycare, and anytime a daycare wants to acquire another piece of land to basically expand, it's a good thing. It's a good thing for the people that own it, it's a great thing for the community and for those younger parents that are in need of accessible and affordable daycare. I think it's a win-win for all, so I'm in total support.
All right, thank you. Again, the public hearing is still open. If there are any other individuals here tonight that would like to speak to this particular matter, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Council?
I'll move that A, Public Hearing, PZR-19-0002 be approved.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi and supported by Ms. Taylor that we approve PZR-19-0002 rezoning request for decor construction on behalf of the owner, Tomorrow Star Academy. Are there any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Very good.
I believe ordinance needs to be introduced at this time.
I'm sorry?
I believe an ordinance needs to be introduced.
What's the number? What is the ordinance's number? Seventeen zero four.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we introduce our ordinance seventeen zero four.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we introduce ordinance number one seven zero four. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance is introduced.
Now that the rezoning has been approved and introduced, I'm asking the council to consider special land use request, PSLU-19-0001, special use request of decor construction on behalf of the owner, Tomorrow Star Academy Daycare, to use an existing house of 2,000 square feet or more for daycare use, property located at 19831 West Nine Mile Road. The property is the same that was just rezoned, existing conditions, and there is a separate site plan that you'll vote on separately, but I just want to introduce again what they're specifically proposing to do is convert the existing structure, add a one-way drop-off pickup with required parking, there's a fenced-in playground area in the rear. They also require to have a screen wall around their property adjacent to residential, they'll have shared parking with their existing facility. One of the conditions of the Planning Commission was to limit the hours of operation, whereas their existing one is 24 hours, their proposed one is within normal hours of operation, and should they feel the need to come back at a future date, they would come back through the special land use process to amend those hours of operation. So, we have a public hearing first on the special use, and then if we could, after that, deal with the site plan issues.
Deal with the site plan after, okay.
Yeah, I just kind of introduced them together.
Yeah, makes sense. We're dealing with the same issues, so we may as well. So, at this time, we'd like to open up a public hearing on the special use request for decor construction on behalf of the owners, Tomorrow Star Academy. If there's anyone who'd like to speak to this particular matter, please step to the lectern and give us your name and address for the record.
Pamela Gerald Pio, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Again, I'm in total support of this expanding of Tomorrow Star's daycare facility. Daycare is so hard to find, quality daycare, in the city of Southfield and in other surrounding communities. Finding an affordable daycare is also hard to find, but finding a daycare that's clean, that's in compliance with city rules, and that kids love, is even harder. I just want to commend the people for doing what the city required, following all the rules. I like the concept of the one-way drop-off for the kids. Hopefully, the playground equipment is safe and it doesn't contain lead, and I'm just in total support. Don't have any kids to use the facility, but I would definitely recommend it to other people in Southfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, the public hearing is still open. If there are any individuals here that would like to speak to this rezoning request, oh, special use request, I'm sorry, please come to the lectern. Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ficassi.
I move approval of PSLUI-19-0004.
Support.
Through the chair.
That's not the right one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I gave the wrong number. Hold on.
Right, that was my clarification. I also want to mention that there's a recommended resolution that goes with your approvals tonight.
So, move, Mr. Chairman, along with the resolution.
Support.
All right, it's moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve PSLU-19-001, special use request of decor construction on behalf of Tomorrow Star Academy Daycare. Are there any other comments or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And through the chair, before we go to the next public hearing, could we handle the one site plan that's part of this? PSP-19-001, Site Plan Review Request, Decor Construction, on behalf of the owner, Tomorrow Star Academy, to convert the existing house to a daycare center with associated parking, child drop-off area, and outside play area, property located at 19831 West Nine Mile Road.
Also, Mr. Chairman?
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the site plan, PSP-19-001, again, decor construction on behalf of Tomorrow Star Academy Daycare. Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ficassi.
I'd like to ask, how many daycare centers do we have in single-family residential areas, do we know?
I could get that report to you.
And I'd like to know...
Just a clarification, this is a commercial daycare, as opposed to...
Yeah, but I want to know, because I get calls when people are leaving toys outside and on the porch, and grass isn't cut. So, I want to know, how often are they checked?
Sure.
Make sure that they are, you're supposed to be doing what they're doing.
Can we get that by the next meeting, do you think?
By the next council meeting.
I mean, I'm not pushing, I'm just...
No, I just...
When do you think, when do you think we can get it?
I can get it by your council meeting in July.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I want to be clear that those under five or less are regulated by the state, they don't come through us, so we have to inquire with the state for those that are licensed.
Okay.
We keep track of the ones that the council grants as a group childcare.
Okay.
It just, will take a little time with the holidays, but I'll have it for your first council meeting.
We just don't want to forget one that's fallen, you know, slipped through the cracks.
We're done the Fourth of July, Terry.
Okay.
All right. Item C?
Yes, our next public hearing is PSLU-19-004, Special Use Request of Lockmore Homeowners Association to amend their plan, bylaws, and master deed, to require minimum standards as defined by the association properties located within Lockmore Development. In essence, they're looking for any new homes to be constructed with a minimum of 2,100 square feet, and they've got some additional architectural elements that they're requesting the council adopt through the special land use process for future homes, not anything that's currently under construction, based on the preponderance of architectural size and details of the majority of the homes that have been built to date. There's four styles that have been built to date, and they're asking with some modifications that any future development take place have a minimum 2,100 square feet with the architectural elements as detailed here. I believe the architect, builder, and the homeowners' association president are here, they might want to have a couple, make a few other comments before we go to public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I've been before you on a number of occasions, Constance Bell, 24637 Pembroke Drive, and as the successor developer, as a private subdivision, and as citizens of the city of Southfield, we have presented, according to a meeting that was held by city council back in February, I believe, it's been a long time of this year, and we were advised to, as a successor developer, to amend our site plan. And that's what we've done, that's what has been presented. In the meantime, again, we're asking for future homes, and because of the time that it took for this to be approved, I have pictures where I know there was a concern about houses that were under construction, they were not where they are currently. It was just a frame, and in fact, when I first came, it was just a hole, it was just the hole in the ground, nothing was built. So, I want to reiterate, there are the future homes that we're interested in, because we want to maintain or increase the value of our homes in our community. We became the successor developer, the city of Southfield has brought us in on a number of different concerns, the road constructions, the tree, we had to do a resolution for the trees, and we are here today with, hoping that you will approve what you advised us to do.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like, we need to open up the public hearing, so if you'd like to have a seat for a moment, then we'll allow others to talk on this matter, unless this gentleman, did you want to speak for this?
My name is Connie Reno, 6533 East Jefferson, Detroit, Michigan. I think that this is about the law, amendment to the site plan, bylaws, and master deed, architectural control, and the HOA taking control of their own destiny, and we want you to vote your conscience.
And again, we're not asking you to enforce our master deed, just the site plan, which we were advised to amend. Thank you.
And through the chair, I just want to make a clarification, this is a special land use that's dealing with the size of the architecture and architectural elements, not the site plan specific. All those previously approved, site plan conditions still remain in place, but the special land use is dealing with the building size and the materials.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, I'd like to open the public hearing on this particular issue now. If there are any individuals here that would like to speak to this particular matter, please come forward. Please give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherman Abdo, my address is 12900 Hall Road, Suite 403, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48313, my phone number is 5864137777. Sorry, can you hear me?
That's better.
Okay, good. I was retained by Mr. Chase, I am representing Mr. Chase in this matter. We've had an opportunity to review the First Amendment to the Master Deed and Bylaws. I have presented to the councilman and woman here a brief oversight of my points, but I'd like to go over them right now. Article 10 of the Master Deed of Lockmore Condominium Project states that any material amendment made to the Master Deed needs to have two-thirds consent vote of the co-owners. There are 34 units in here, that means there'd be 34 votes. Mr. Chase, as a owner of 10 of those lots, would be entitled to 10 of those votes. Additionally, we believe that this amendment was not voted on by the co-owners. Additionally, the reason why this is a material change is because they're trying to give themselves architectural control. Under their own bylaws of Article 6, Section 3O, state that the developer's rights for architectural control may, in the developer's discretion, be assigned to the association or other successor developer. The original developer of Lockmore Homes LLC did not transfer this power at any time to the association. Additionally, the homeowners' association is trying to declare themselves as successor developer of Lockmore Homes Condominium Project, thus materially altering their status. A successor developer is defined by the Michigan Condominium Act as a person or entity who acquires the lesser of 10 units or 75% of the units in a condominium project. As a homeowners' association does not own any of the property, it cannot anoint itself as successor developer. Now, if they're going to go to the point of doing a vote to change themselves as successor developer, I believe this would be another material change to the bylaws, which would require a vote of two-thirds of the co-owners, of which I believe they have not received in this matter. There's been a lawsuit prematurely filed by the homeowners' association against my client, Mr. Chase, to enforce these bylaws, of which have not been approved yet by the city of Southfield. We have filed a motion for temporary restraining order against the homeowners' association, asking them to stop seizing approval to this amendment until there is a vote or other actions taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open. If there are any other individuals here tonight that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Darren Chase, and my address is 13001 23 Mile Road, Suite 101, Shelby Township, Michigan. And I'm here today because I wanted to give you the human side of the story. I'm an investor, I bought these lots directly from the previous developer in good faith. I read the bylaws when I bought these lots, because you have to in order to decide if it's going to make sense. At that time, everything made sense. That's eight or nine years ago that I've been holding these lots, maintaining these lots, paying my association dues to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars, and now I believe that the HOA board is trying unilaterally to make these changes, because they want no construction to happen in that community. In fact, at a meeting here one year ago at this building, they specifically and directly told me that. They told me that they considered other legal methods that they could use in order to prevent me from building on those lots. So, what I did was, I was selling lots to another builder, and they keep tying this other builder to me, but I just sold three lots, they asked me to stop selling lots to him a year ago, I said, "If I do, I'm going to have to build there myself," and that's where I am. And now they want to, they want to change the association bylaws in a material way, and honestly, the changes that they're asking for are material, because in effect, what they could do is dictate a style of house and some features on the house that the public either doesn't want, or that it's too expensive for me to build. They could make it so economically unfeasible for me to build there, that the lots would remain vacant. And so, I'm here today to tell you that I have no option but to litigate this matter as fully as I possibly can, in order to preserve my rights in those lots. I can also tell you that the Planning Commission made their recommendation to this body because, based on false information. I sent out the video to everybody, I don't know if you had a chance to watch it, but three of the Planning Commission members asked the HOA president if there was a vote by the residents in that community, and she three times said there was, and there was not. I am entitled to vote, and I was never invited to a meeting or called to a vote. I can also assure you that they do not have a majority of support in the community for this. This is four board members acting unilaterally, and it's not just on this issue that they're acting unilaterally on, but they're spending their money on attorneys, spending their money on architects, spending their money on consultants, and they have zero in the bank. So, the homeowners are going to go broke over this matter, and I'm trying to resolve it outside of court, but right now, I have no choice but to pursue this legally, and I just want to let you know the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, the public hearing is still open. If there's any other individuals here that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward. Please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Streeter, I live at 24709 Pembroke Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I'm one of the original homeowners... I'm one of the original homeowners when Mark Rourke had the property and I had my house built there. Then it was over three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. So personally, no, I don't want a smaller house in the sub-built to make my property value go any further down from when the economy went down, and it's just now starting to come up. I've invested a lot, like I say, I had my house built. Thank you.
Again, the public hearing is still open, if there are any other individuals that would like to speak, please come forward, name and address for the record, please.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box one-fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-seven-dash-zero-one-five-five. My telephone number is two-four-eight-three-four-six-zero-four-three-nine. I am really, really disturbed. I looked in this very complex in two thousand and thirteen and wanted to buy a house, and someone beat me to the punch. I would be really upset, like these homeowners, if when this plan was approved, on the site plan, it said that houses needed to be built in this size with this character, and they gave four options. To just be going through this all these years later, a bankrupt developer, changing the name, same people, it is a disgrace that the people have to deal with this. As this woman just said, three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars when she built her house, and you're going to allow, or potentially allow, a house of lesser means to be built there. This is not what should be happening to these residents. And I don't know, Mr. Darren Chase, but for this gentleman to come up to the podium and talk about the human side of things, what do you think it is for the people that bought houses in this development? It's human, it's their side, it's what they think and what they feel about their property that they worked so hard to buy and to build. I'm just concerned about the fact that if a person has ten lots there, are you paying homeowners dues prior to the built? And do you have a vote because you own the lots prior to the built? I've been hearing a lot of talk about the Michigan Condominium Association, does it speak to that? All I know is that this issue needs to be resolved. These people have been coming here for a long time, and for the city not to be able to find original documents, it is something wrong with that picture. And if you can't find the original document, are you really able to vote on anything in good faith? You have to have the original. I want this to be over for my resident friends that live there, and I want them to get their just due and feel comfortable again about this place where they bought their homes. Thank you.
Again, the public hearing is still open, if there are any other individuals that would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Yes, Milton Hall, address of two-four-six-nine-three Pembroke Drive. I'm a new buyer there. One of the new constructions is going up right next to my residence, and I feel that the hard work that I put into saving for this, I'm not willing at this point in time to allow an inferior product to be built next door to me, and therefore cause what I consider an investment to go down. I've talked to a lot of the individuals in the neighborhood, and a lot of them are the original owners, and I just can't see, as we talk, as I heard the gentleman talk about, that the building materials will be cheaper materials and things of that nature in order to get houses built there. I don't know the history that has gone on here, but I think before we put an inferior product in the neighborhood, I would like for maybe one or two houses to be built with the same specs that I have with my house. And like I say, I think everybody has worked too hard to keep the neighborhood up, I mean, everybody's house is wonderful, and I think when you start lowering and watering things down, that's where I think you'll run into problems.
Again, the public hearing is still open, for any other individuals here this evening that would like to speak to this matter, you may still come forward. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrew Lee, my address is two-four-six-seven-seven Pembroke. I'm here to discuss the, well, it's not a problem, but I retired from the city, Detroit, and I'm a veteran, and I put all my money into this home that I have here now. I had a lot of trouble from Southfield to get my house in compliance, and now we have this situation, and I'm hoping that you guys can figure something out and take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, the public hearing is still open, if there are any other individuals that would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, council, my name is Vicki Neal, and this is my husband.
Lee Neal.
We reside at two-four-six-six-seven Pembroke Drive, Southfield, Michigan. I am a homeowner and a resident in the Lockmore community. I'm also a secretary and a member of the board. A little history on why we are here and how we got here. The proposed amendment to the site plan began because of violations to the Lockmore bylaws by the builder. Our bylaws, according to Section three of Article four, state, and I'll read from the bylaws, that prior to the commencement of any construction activities relative to the building of a dwelling, the builder shall post with the developer a two-thousand-dollar building fee to cover construction on the roads, and to make sure it's maintained in good and clean conditions after construction. Our bylaws also act and state that adequate security is given in case construction and the timely manner is not met, and also that no building should be constructed within the subdivision without the appropriate specifications and plans, there should be construction plans, and the list goes on. My point is, the builder has met zero, none of these conditions of our bylaws, and that is what brought us here today. What he has done is put up homes without the consent of the homeowners association, and are not meeting our requirements because of this lack or this violation, and we need some help here. Thank you.
I'm Lee Neal, and that's my wife. The point is, is that we live there, we're not visitors, we live there, and that, we bought into that subdivision because we expected to be erected the way we saw the plan and those models, that's what attracted us there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Again, the public hearing is still open, if there are any other individuals that would like to speak to this matter, please come to the lectern, you have three minutes, just give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Faye Maddox, I live in the Lockmore subdivision, two-four-six-four-one Pembroke Drive, Southfield, Michigan, four-eight-zero-three-three, and I'd like to note that my address is not on this piece of paper. My street number is not here, so we somehow need to get that fixed next time around. So that's my first thing, I'm at two-four-six-four-one, it's not listed in the lot numbers that are there.
I'm the vice president for the Board of Directors for the Lockmore Homeowners Association, and in the year of two thousand and fifteen, I believe you all have a copy of something that our president has given you, that talks about a settlement agreement and a mutual release, and in there on page three, it mentions that Darren Chase, the status would be a real estate developer, but it's not to be interpreted as the developer. So as board members and as homeowners in the Lockmore subdivision, someone had to step up to the plate to become the successor developer, and we decided that it needed to be us to make sure that we maintain and invest in our own property. And we sought legal counsel, we did what we knew to be all the right things to make sure that when we amended our bylaws, that they were done legally. So we've done what we needed to do to become the successor developer, and we stand on that position that we are, and we've got the full support of our homeowners. I don't know if there are any that don't oppose it or not, I've not heard at all, but that we're, everyone that's here are fully in support of this. And they can raise their hands if they don't want to stand, they can raise their hands to show support for what we're trying to do. So we thank you for listening to us, and we hope and pray that you will approve this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Public hearing is still open, if there are anyone else that would like to speak, please come forward. Need your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Keith Harris, All Race and Life Matter, PO Box twenty-seven-sixty-nine, zip code four-eight-zero-three-seven. I absolutely agree with my neighbors here, this city has a history of corruption, just blatant corruption when it comes down to pulling for years, I mean, applying for for years for anything from the code enforcement. I mean, what you guys are doing to these people's community by letting somebody build houses of less value, I'm just shocked. I mean, we got a man here sitting here as, running the city that don't live in this city. You don't live in this city. And then we got a couple of people live in this city that's just profiting off the city. These people have every right to fight for their homes, and we're joining their fight, our association, we're fighting, we just had a phenomenal picnic, and nobody wants new builds in our home, in our community. We don't want the schools turned into condos. We are going to have one hell of a battle, it's coming, I want you, it's coming, and we're going to join them, we're going to join them, because we can legally prove that this city is corrupt, and definitely with this attorney, she has a history of protecting corruption in this city.
All right, public hearing is still open, if there's anyone else that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Council President Cruz. I would indicate for the record, there is a pending court matter in the Oakland County Circuit Court, case number two thousand and nineteen-one-seventy-three-eight-three-four. There is, in front of the Judge Daniel O'Brien, there's a motion for a temporary restraining order set for Wednesday morning, in two days, to determine, among other things, whether or not the master deed and bylaws were correctly amended.
Okay.
So I have, I've spoken to council from both sides, and that hearing, as far as I know, is still proceeding forward on Wednesday.
So be your advice at this point not to take any action tonight?
It would be my recommendation to see the outcome of the hearing in front of Judge Daniel O'Brien, to postpone this to a date uncertain until we get a ruling from the court.
Okay, council, are we okay with that? All right, very good, okay, we'll hold off.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And the attorney can tell me if I shouldn't, but it doesn't seem to me that twenty-one-hundred square feet is an inappropriate minimum size, and I would like to know from the builder, is that what he's objecting to? They want all brick, and they want a minimum twenty-one-hundred square feet. So, you know, he's talking about how this, it would become unbuildable, that they're going to control what he can build, you know, twenty-one-hundred square feet is not undoable. So, I mean, I'd like to know that, if not tonight, at some point.
I'll allow him to speak to that question.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer that question. Twenty-one-hundred square feet is not the problem. It's stretching the boundaries on what the public will pay for housing per square foot. If I, I'm already building eighteen-hundred-and-sixty square feet, and my houses are beautiful, by the way, all the references that you've heard have been to the previous builder houses. But twenty-one-hundred square feet is not a problem, it's the vagueness of the proposed changes that create a problem for me, it leaves uncertainty. And so I also want to state that I've tried to meet with the association through the two attorneys they've had, I actually met with them in August voluntarily, last August, before I broke ground, before I applied for permits, and I did so voluntarily, so it's not like I'm not an unreasonable person, so that's where I stand, twenty-one-hundred square feet is not the problem.
Well, again, since we do have pending litigation, I think we should just hold off on further discussion on the matter until that's been settled.
Through the chair.
Can I get the attorney first?
Yeah, through the chair, I have had some discussion here at the bench with Mr. Crowe, and it is our recommendation, perhaps we will have a ruling from the court very quickly, so we should postpone this one month.
One month, okay, very good.
Yeah, I was just going to say to a date certain, the next regular council meeting, therefore, if things are resolved at the court, they can move forward. If it's a date uncertain, we have to go through the whole public hearing process again. Now, if next month we have no resolution, then you can decide to do it, but this way it preserves us moving forward, should we have a ruling with the court. So the next regular council meeting, it would be July fifteenth, so we would recommend that it be postponed to July fifteenth.
All right. Counsel, we're okay with that?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, we'll move to July fifteenth.
Do we have to vote on that, right?
Do we have to?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the action on PSLU one-nine-dash-zero-zero-zero-four until a date certain of July fifteenth.
Support. It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we postpone action on special use requests of Lockmore HOA bylaws until a date certain of July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? So moved, all right, thank you. Item D.
Thank you. Our last public hearing tonight is PSV nineteen-dash-zero-zero-zero-one, request for alley vacation of Ollie Dagger to vacate the twenty-foot width alley located along the rear portion of properties located at two-zero-eight-one-zero and two-zero-eight-five-four West Eight Mile Road, and two-zero-seven-zero-three and two-zero-seven-one-one West Haven. And the property is identified here on the screen, it's located behind the retail off of Eight Mile Road, the width is twenty feet and the depth is a hundred and seventy-seven feet. This was taken back in May of existing conditions. In essence, the property owner has used the vacant parcel for several years and would like it officially vacated. The city engineer has no objections maintaining the easement going north-south through the property, the fire marshal has reviewed, as long as there's the appropriate clearance for fire apparatus to get in, they do not have any objection. Typically, when an alley is vacated, fifty percent goes to both adjacent properties, but the applicant is But the applicant has secured a quick lane deemed for the two property owners to the north, deeding the property to the applicant. And with that, I believe the attorney's here.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a long day, and I'm sure it has been for everybody here. I'm just asking that you vacate the alley. And I think we've answered quite a few questions last time at the working sessions. If there's anything I can supplement to it, I'd be more than happy to.
All right. We'd like to open the public hearing up now. If there are any individuals here that would like to speak to this particular matter, please come to the lectern and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ficassi?
I move that we approve PSV 19-0001.
Support.
Support. Been moved by Mr. Ficassi, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve PVS, I mean, PSV 19-0001, request for alley vacation for Alley Dagger. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Request approved. Okay. No problem. We'll now move on to our communications portion, excuse me, of the meeting. Our first request for recognition is Pamela Gerald.
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I'd like to thank all of counsel for the Juneteenth Resolution proclamation. Senator Adam Olley from Detroit did SB 62 on June 19th of this year. So it was introduced and voted on and adopted. So now I want to get to what I've been thinking about for quite some time. I mentioned before that one of the council people here, and I will say his name, Dan Brightwell, had went to Sapphire under the auspices of investigating some of the code enforcement and building violations, and walked out with two donations and the amount of $500 per person, the owner of the complex and the president of the complex. You heard me talk about before that another issue that came before council that had to be voted on here with former councilman, real estate broker Jonathan Brayman. He got a $250 donation while the issue was before the city. And also the doctor who's building the conference center, he got a $1,000 donation while the issue was before the city. I think it's a conflict of interest. I think you guys need to create and adopt some kind of rules of procedure that says no council person or city person is allowed to solicit for funds from these people, and you're voting on these deals while you're a candidate. Now, in addition to those two that I mentioned, there was another issue that came before this council, and it was Bar 7. All of the drama that was happening at Bar 7, you guys had a public hearing. What did this same councilman do? He went right to that entity, Bar 7, and got $600 in-kind donations, maybe food or something to that effect, and he's a candidate for city council. I think it's unethical. It may not be against the law, but it's improper, and it gives a bad image to the city that when you're a candidate for office, you get sure-win money from these people that come before you with issues that you have to vote on. I don't think it's fair, and I think you should give the money back. You're not the man you said you was when I helped you campaign, and I regret helping you.
Time is up. Ms. Gerald.
I regret.
Next, yes, go ahead, Mr. Brightwell.
Uh, Ms. Gerald, as I said before, I'm fascinated with this fixation you have with me.
Don't flatter yourself. Look in my hood. Hot to try. Don't flatter yourself.
I'm, I'm living rent-free in your brain. So.
You don't even have a space. What's your first?
Look, I'm sorry, it's, Mr. Brightwell has the floor.
Oh, okay.
And it.
Mr. Brightwell has the floor.
Thought he wasn't allowed to comment. You said you didn't do that. So what's the procedure? Comment or not?
I never said that. I never said that. Counsel always has an opportunity.
You say in communication, the common rule is you don't respond to communication.
Ma'am, this is, this is our, this is our meeting for the city.
But if you want to, go ahead. Because you're going to give me a speech.
Go ahead, Mr. Brightwell.
So come on with it.
I'm sure you will.
Uh, Ms. Gerald, Pam, as I stated before, I don't understand this fixation that you have with me. Uh, I do understand that you look at my campaign finance report, and I'm a very honest person. I put everything in my campaign finance report that I should put in my campaign finance report. And what you stated is, I'm going to say it gently, you don't know what you're talking about. And as, as I stated before, as I stated before, anyone that comes to this particular podium should know specifically what they're talking about. So, um.
Did you get a donation from the two, from the doctor and Jonathan Brayman?
Ms. Gerald, Mr. Brightwell has the floor. You've had your three minutes.
My campaign finance report is easy to read, it's clear, it's day, it's accurate.
You didn't put ours over there. We go. You forgot.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh.
Just speak to the public, Dan. We don't need to speak to that.
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, my campaign financial report are accurate. They're available to the entire world. And there are sequences to everything. If that, if anyone has a specific issue with anything on my particular campaign finance report, I can answer any particular item verbatim. And the fact that something is on my campaign finance report, that's a pure indication I'm not trying to hide anything. So the fact that it's there for somebody in Russia to look at it is, is prima facie evidence. I'm not trying to hide anything. So, thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Brightwell. Our next request for recognition is Gerard Mullin.
My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, tonight, I would like to talk about Section 8.4, Section 8.4, in the Southfield City Charter. 8.4 is entitled Budget Proposal. And I quote from Section 8.4. "A public hearing shall be held on the budget proposal each year, and notice of such public hearing will be published at least one week in advance," unquote. On June 3rd, I pointed out that this council had failed to hold a public hearing for a proposed budget for this year. And on June 17th, I pointed out that this council had failed to hold a public hearing for a proposed budget for the last 56 years. Clearly, you folks can see you not only violated your own city charter, but you also violated the state law. That is Public Act 43 of 1963, Section 2, which states, and I quote, "A local unit shall hold a public hearing on its proposed budget. The local unit shall give notice of the hearing by publication in a newspaper of general circulation within the local unit at least six days before the hearing," unquote. My question to you is this. If little Lathert Village can publish a legal notice for a public hearing for their proposed budget on May 2nd of this year in the Southfield Sun, then why can't you folks hold a public hearing like Lathert Village? Why? Why not? You folks here are getting sloppy. For example, take tonight's agenda, which states that this meeting begins at 5:30 PM EST, that is Eastern Standard Time. Mr. Chairman, most of this country and all of the state of Michigan, plus all of Oakland County, with the possible exception of this council, has been on daylight savings time for the last 107 days. Where have you been, Mr. Chairman, since March 10th? I surmise that you have been asleep at the switch. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Sonia Simpson Gardner. Our next request for recognition is Mr. Keith Harris.
Keith Harris, All Race and Life Matter, P.O. Box 2769, ZIP Code 48037, Juneteenth. Ain't that amazing? The day they freed the slaves. Well, I don't feel free. I don't feel free in Southfield. I bought a house from an old white couple that deliberately sold me the house for you to force me into a lien that you know is a setup for failure. Just a few weeks ago, I watched three of the most articulate black men come here and apply for a police chief. All three of them did great. Matter of fact, all three of them did better than the acting chief, especially the first guy. He gave the best questions. He answered all the answers. But can we trust our city manager, a man who don't even live in this city, to make a decision like that? No, I don't think we can. I think he's going to make the decision based on the Jews, him being white, a corrupt prosecutor. I don't, I think this city got a lot of secrets. We still can't understand why the first police chief left. Who moves to Albany? Who moves to Albany? I mean, he just packed up and left, didn't even say, "Thank you, residents, for fighting to get me the job." He just packed up and left. I mean, what did y'all have on him to make him leave? Why is it that you don't want honest police officers? Why is it that you use black people for revenue? The courts made $50 million off of, in, in fine fees and others, and they were all black people paying those fines and fees. This is why you don't want an outsider in this city. I know why you don't want an outsider coming here, because you know he ain't going to do your dirty work, Fred. You know this. But I'm telling you, we watching you, and something big about to happen. I've warned you before, and I'd say it again and again and again. You can only push my people so far. You can only push us so far, and we at the brink of breaking, stealing our homes, using police officers for revenue. Do you know there was a federal law that came down earlier this year from the United States Supreme Court saying you can no longer use the courtrooms for fines and fees to raise revenue for a city? I hope Southfield catch up with other honest cities by first getting a honest city manager.
Our next request for recognition is Stacy Jackson.
21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I'm here tonight to once again come before you to discuss the septic tank issue. It has been almost exactly nine months since I joined with 60 residents in my community, 20 of which were association presidents across the city of Southfield, and yet there's still been nothing publicly said about a healthy resolve. In fact, I not only stand for Beechwood Homeowners Association, but I stand in solidarity with Lockmore and Circle Drive and Hooper and Simmons and Prosper, all of us victims of poor decision-making and planning from this council and this city with housing. You know, walking into the doors, there's a sign on there commemorating the 100 years of voting rights for women. Well, for folks like me, it actually took 45 years after that before we could even vote. So for some reason, I'm channeling Sojourner Truth today to say, "Ain't I a woman?" I have watched as this council made an immediate moratorium for a sex doll brothel. When you couldn't come up with a resolve, you extended that moratorium, not once, but twice. But ain't I a woman? I've watched this council defend and stand for 18 gas station owners to keep the right for their ICE. They only had to come here one time in solidarity. It was resolved. But ain't I a woman? I've also watched on June 3rd for one of the most important positions of this city for police chief, but that didn't make the news. You know what did? 35 people walked in here with red shirts and protest dined to save animals. Immediately, the city saw them, recognized them, tabled it, and promised a resolve. But ain't I a woman? See, the way I see it, until a Rockwaller can walk into Almost Home and walk out with a labradoodle and take it to a property address to pay property taxes, it's not a damn dog in there more important than me, more important than the residents of Beechwood, Circle Drive, Lockmore, or any other community here. See, I come here, and I'm silent, and I'm sweet, but I don't play. I'm a puppy with teeth, and right about now for my family, I want to show them. See, this is enough. Enough. When are you going to answer me to give a resolve about the septic tank issue? Because right now, you're not making me feel like a woman. And my mother, my grandmother, and all those before me took enough slashes, beatings, and hangings for me to be here to tell you that. Ain't I a woman?
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Toby Rhodes. Our next request for recognition is Constance Bell. Our next request for recognitions, recognition is Connie Reno. Our next request is Vicki Neal. Our next request is Lee Neal. Our next request is Gregory Keeler. Our next request is Norman Bias. And our next request is Sarah Habo.
Sarah Habo, I have two things that I wanted to address with the city council today. One is, as I was in the neighborhoods, I spoke to a resident, actually a few residents, who showed me that they had received code violations regarding issues with their sidewalks. And a few of them had issues where there were trees that are growing on the right of way, and so the roots are the cause of this issue with their sidewalk. But I noticed that there's a code violation that happened to those residents, and yet Henry Ford Optimize still has water that's completely filled, two ponds that are supposed to be detention ponds, which shouldn't hold water for long term, and nothing has happened with that. So if we can go and make citations for residents regarding sidewalks in their homes, then Henry Ford Optimize, a corporate neighbor, should also be held to that same standard. And the second comment that I have is, I had an issue with the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation, and Mayor Seifer was kind enough to host me in his office to show me a presentation regarding the. should also have a detailed explanation that they have access to, but I'd like theirs to have some information that I didn't get. One, I'd ask that there's an explanation as to why residents are unable to attend those meetings. Second, what HUD regulation requires city employees to be on the board of the nonprofit that runs the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Corporation? And then the last thing is, exactly how many houses that have been rehabilitated through the program were actually put into the Habitat for Humanity program? Thank you.
Um, I did skip one name, Harold Hill, uh, who requested recognition, if he's here, which I don't believe. All right, very good. And we've finished the communications portion of the meeting. Uh, council, we have one item. Can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the expense report for Daniel Brightwell.
Mm-hmm. Mm.
Support.
Thank you. Yeah, we have, uh, it's been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we approve the expense report for Daniel Brightwell's attendance to the GFOA Annual Conference. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Brightwell.
I would abstain.
We have one abstention.
Any other?
All right, council, any other comments this evening? Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah, I have comments. Uh, since I've sort of revitalized the veteran news, I have, I did it last meeting, and I'm doing it again this meeting, info that deals with veterans. And I will make copies available for this out there on the, uh, in the foyer on the table there. The VA has established airborne hazard and open burn pit registry. If you were, as a veteran, if you were deployed in Southeast Asia, Southwest Asia, or on after August 2, 1990, or in Afghanistan after September 11, 2001, you are encouraged to register with the VA to assess the long and short-term effect of your health being exposed. Airborne hazards and open pit in countries, in countries or in bodies of water, or, or in the airspace with this partial, this affected. If you were in Iraq, Afghanistan, Kuwait, Saudi Arabia, or the waters of the Persian Gulf or the, of the Red Sea, you are encouraged to register with the VA. Airborne hazards are, can be a number of environmental contaminants that may cause short and long-term health effects to exposed individuals. For example, burn pit smoke, oil well fire smoke, sand and dust particles, among other things. The use of open pits, open burn pits, was a common waste disposal practice at military sites outside of the U.S., such as Afghanistan or Iraq. This came across my desk just so happened last week when we were having the issues with the, uh, the first fund, first responders in New York and the, and the depleting of their funds. And most of their concerns were because of the, uh, in, uh, the inhaling of the debris from the Twin Towers. And this is quite similar, uh, when you had veterans, veterans who were exposed to, um, burn pits, uh, and also the sand and dust and numerous other things. You're asked to call to register with the VA. They will take a look at your health. They can, uh, let you know whether or not you have any potential long and or short-term, uh, illnesses that might potentially be coming down the road. You'll call 1-800-477-8227 for assistance in, um, assessing you and also allowing you to get on the registry. This is a good idea because the, in essence of, the VA will be looking at your long-term, term health, and they will get a baseline for you at, at that particular point in time. The last item I have here, the VA is offering same-day mental health services for veterans. The military, uh, culture of, of never surrendering and, uh, the can-do attitude kind of, uh, is, is, is embedded in veterans. Uh, because of just defining characteristics, most veterans will not seek help. As of right now, as of now, the 172 VA medical centers around the United States will be offering you same-day mental health evaluations. Since 2007, the VA has hired over 4,000 mental health physicians nationwide. And in 2018, so perhaps you don't, don't fool along, but the VA treated 1,000, 1,700,000 veterans, received mental health services from the VA. And if you are having trouble, or you wanna talk to someone, please call the VA Crisis Line at 1-800-273-8255. And that, that's available 24/7, 365 days a year. On a lighter note, on June 27th, on June 22 of this month, the VA celebrated 75-year, the 75th anniversary of the GI Bill. And the most popular item on the GI Bill is the home loan, uh, application for veterans. So, uh, I know some of the things I, I hear, hear are kind of heavy, like mental health and, um, um, death and long-term, uh, health issues. But I'm doing this as a chairman, former chairman of the Veterans Commission for seven, for 10 years here in the city of Southfield. And we used to do this twice a year, have veteran seminars, making veterans aware of what is available for them. So, this is just my little, small way of reinstituting, uh, some very, um, important things to veterans. And one other thing to you, although you might not be a veteran, if you hear something, or you know someone, a family member, a neighbor, a friend, please pass this information on, 'cause you never know who might, uh, be in need of something of this nature. Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes. Through the chair to Mr. Zorn. This is the second time Ms. Havill has spoken about Henry Ford Optimize. Is there any way we could ask our code enforcement to just go out and take a look at that because of the warmer weather, we have mosquitoes and all that kind of stuff, it becomes a health issue or potential? And just have her, have our, our code department report back to us at our, let's say, next public meeting, July 15, and let us know what they find and how it's being addressed with the retention of the water?
I can have code go out and also have engineering do a report.
Yes, please.
There's a little engineering history on that. Um, it's been redesigned a couple times, I believe, but I'm gonna let the city engineer speak to that specifically.
Okay. Could they be at the July 15th meeting?
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, just so people know, when you come to the microphone, we do hear you. We appreciate you coming, first of all. We know how, uh, sometimes you can be very nervous speaking before people, and we, we do take that under consideration. But we are listening, we do respond, and we do, uh, try to answer the questions. Where I'm seeing that we're not doing a good job is getting back to you and letting you know what we've done. So, we are doing things on your behalf, but we're not letting you know. So, we're, we are working towards doing a better job at that, and, uh, that's why I'm asking for this particular item to come back so we can get a report. But thank you for those requests, Ms. Havill.
All right, thank you. Yep, Mr. Ficassi?
Yeah. Mr. Administrators, your friend, you get this road report, you get this, don't you?
Y- yes.
You're gonna have this, but, but, uh, Front Page is talking about this new product they're using now. It's a resurfacing project for projects and roads. $25 million they're doing it. It's supposed to last like only five years, but you can almost resurface 10 times the amount of these roads. And, um, and I think we should look at that because we've got so many roads that really need some surfacing rather than going to full reconstruction or tearing everything up and then putting it back. But, um, it's a good thing if we can work it out and see what it amounts to. It's only like, I think, a two-inch layer of asphalt. I'll give you this report and you can read it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you. Um, just want to let everyone know that this Friday is the deadline for Community Pride Awards. Uh, so if you have a neighbor, you drive by a business, a home, anything that you think that their landscaping deserves to be recognized, uh, you can fill out a form. They are due by 5:00 PM on Friday. Uh, they are available on the city's website and the information counter in front of City Hall. Uh, if you have any questions, you can call Community Relations at 248-796-5130. Uh, I'd also like to let everyone know that this Wednesday, we have on the front lawn from 5:00 to 9:00, um, Family Fun and Safety Night. There will be, um, a fun area presented by Oakland County Parks and Rec and Vibe Credit Union that will feature different types of inflatables, a rock climbing wall, a ropes course, and much more. The Southfield Police Department and Fire Department will be on hand and present a fun and informative demonstration, and there will also be tours of the Fire Department's safety house. Ascension Providence will also be there distributing bicycle helmets for children while supplies last. Um, and there will be many more games, uh, music, as well as, uh, some food trucks. Uh, the evening will end with the family movie Jumanji, um, starting around 7:30 or so, once it starts getting dark. So, that should be fun. It's a free event, except for any food purchase from the food trucks. Again, this Wednesday from 5:00 to 9:00. Uh, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else? Mr. Mayor?
I have nothing to add this evening.
All right, thank you. Mr.?
I have no items either. Thank you.
Madam Attorney?
Thank you, President Cruz. I do have an item to add this evening. I passed out at the beginning of the meeting, um, a resolution. I will quote from the letter that I drafted as well. Uh, "The United States Supreme Court, um, is set to review, uh, a trio of employment cases that consider whether, uh, federal sex discrimination protections under Title VII apply to unemployed sexual orientation and identity." There is a split amongst, uh, the circuits, the federal circuits, uh, out of our Sixth Circuit and out of the Second Circuit, the, uh, the courts did recognize that the Title VII protection, uh, for sex discrimination, um, extends to prohibit, uh, discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. The 11th Circuit, however, disagreed. So, um, hence, there is this review of, uh, these three cases by, uh, the United States Supreme Court. Uh, 21 states have anti-discrimination laws protecting individuals against employment discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity, but there is no federal mandate. Um, here in Southfield, Ordinance 1636 enacted in 2015 already prohibits discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. Um, I prepared a resolution for you, uh, seeking to lend support to the EEOC and the plaintiffs in the trio of employment cases, uh, before the United States Supreme Court in the fall 2019 term.
All right, thank you. Counsel?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to, that we approve the resolution, um, as presented by the city attorney.
Support.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the resolution to support the legal position that Title VII extends to protect sexual orientation and gender identity in the workplace. Are there any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, resolution approved. Anything else, Madam Attorney?
Uh, nothing else, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, anything from the clerk's office?
Nothing at this time.
All right, very good.
Mr. President?
Uh, Ms. Taylor?
I move that we enact Amendment to Ordinance Number 1458 Solicitors.
Support.
To be, to be enacted.
It's been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we enact Amendment to the Ordinance Number 1458 Solicitors. Are there any concerns, questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, Mr. President, I also move that we enact Amendment to Ordinance Number 1517 for vendors to be enacted.
All right. It's been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we enact
Amendment to the Ordinance Number 1458 Solicitors. Are there any concerns, questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, Mr. President, I also move that we enact Amendment to Ordinance Number 1517 for vendors to be enacted.
Support.
All right. It's been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Mandelbaum, that we enact Amendment, uh, the Amendment to Ordinance Number 1517 for vendors. Uh, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right. Is there anything else pretty good at order this evening? Seeing none, all approved. Uh, meeting adjourned.